Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Zonic Board of Appeals, Town Wareham. Tonight's meeting, Wednesday, October 11, 2017, at 6:30 PM. And we are at room 320 at the Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. When I call the meeting to order, I make a roll call. My far right, Wilma Engerman, town planner Ken Buckland, our clerk Jim Akabachi, far left, associate member Jake Morrison, Carl Baptiste, myself, the Chair Nazir El Qalasi, and we have tonight, Building Commissioner David Requena. We have some preliminary business to do, the minutes for September 27.
I've been looking at them while we were waiting here. They look accurate to me.
Did anyone else look at the minutes?
I did.
You okay?
Yeah.
All right. Wilma, minutes.
You good with these minutes?
I didn't get a chance to read them, no.
All right.
Do you want to see them before we vote?
Yeah, you say they were fine.
They are?
Okay.
Okay. Move to accept as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
A second by Carl, to approve the minutes for September 27, 2017. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, 5-0-0. I want to take a reorder, continue public hearing for petition 33-17, Angelo and Melody Salvatore, 15 South Boulevard. I guess Ken get a phone call to continue the hearing, right? To get an extension.
My phone call is with the developer, Michael Sorava.
Sorava.
Sorava. And he'd said he was looking to withdraw the application, but he had to contact the owner to confirm.
Okay, I look at the email with the neighbors, and it says to extend, to get an extension.
So let's continue it.
All right. So based on these, I mean, whatever, emails and discussion, I recommend that we continue it until October 25th. Is October 25th good for you, ma'am?
I guess.
If not, is November 8.
This is 33-17, South Boulevard?
Yeah. October's good? All right, so...
Now, it might be that she should have said suspend it to their next year.
Well, we'll decide on October. Yeah.
It's all you guys, right?
Exactly.
So what's the date work?
To October 25th. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to continue, 33-17, for 15 South Boulevard, to October 25th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain.
I have a question. Do they notify these people?
No, we don't get no more notification. That's your notification, that's it.
It's mine, but what about David's?
That's their problem.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna go with the petition, 6-15, road construction bond release, CEC.
We...
Which one? That's requested to be drawn from who? Hold on one second. Excuse me, one second. Ken, what's this here she wrote?
I wrote that, based on the phone conversation I had with the developer.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go...
Good night, Carl.
We'll just leave it like this.
Yep, we just leave it just the way it is.
Okay, petition 6-15, the road construction bond release for CEC Solar, 127 Marion Road.
There was a renovation that was necessary in the drainage system. We were waiting to get a report as to its completion, and we don't have that report yet, so...
So we don't have that from Charlie?
Right.
Here to review.
Should we continue it?
We have one here.
That's for a new solar project.
Oh, Blue Wave.
Other one.
Other one.
My Jordan, Jonathan Road.
Okay, so...
So do we want to continue?
Continue that one. Don't have to take any action on that one.
All right, so we'll continue. I recommend we continue 6-15 to...
You don't need a motion on that one, just...
You don't? Just continue it?
Right.
All right, we continue 6-15.
Do we gotta continue to a specific date, or...
October 25th. 6-15.
Yes, as representative here.
Yeah, okay.
Come on down.
Yeah, come forward.
Do we want to look at this folder?
Yeah, all right, 33... We needed Charlie.
He has new plans.
David, you met there, you went there?
I did.
All right, very good. All right, so we're gonna continue, actually, so David, occupancy for 31-17, Jay Donnegan Company, 2419 and 2427 Cranberry Highway, and 4 Seth Toby Road.
I was just reading about that.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Zach Richards with Ball Engineering. We came in front of you about a month or two ago with a general project update, and also showed you the signage for this project. And at this point, as you know, we're in front of you for a major site plan modification, which has continued till next, next meeting. But we do have Aldi and AutoZone, which have been underway on construction, and Aldi's getting very close to completion. So as such, we're coming before you to, to try to get that certificate of occupancy for Aldi, and show you what the site's gonna look like at that time. And so, we actually, we had a meeting with Ken Buckland, David Requena, and Charlie Riley yesterday to review these conditions, and make sure they made sense. And I've handed you out a, one of those plans, but I'll just run through this real quick with you. So we have the AutoZone up here, near Toby Road, and the Aldi down here, the bottom left. The rest of the pads are still open for discussion, obviously. We're proposing some different pads under the site plan modifications. As such, those areas don't really know what they want to be at this point. We do want to complete the site to the full extent that we can reasonably. So what I've done for you here is shaded out and hatched in red, red stripes, the areas that are to be deferred for future construction, which would happen next year at this point, hopefully following the site plan modification review. So these kind of encapture the pads and the associated, I guess, parking layout areas that would be deferred. Starting in the bottom right, we have building D here. Obviously not knowing how that building's gonna lay out, and also if we had put in the parking there, and the associated sidewalks during the construction of those buildings, those would all be damaged and ripped up, so we're trying to minimize duplicative efforts here. So we're proposing asphalt curb, temporary asphalt curb along that pad area, to kind of complete the drive aisles there. And then, you know, we'll stabilize that area, obviously, with mulch or crushed stone for it to be completed next year. Similar thing up in the, near the bank up here, at the out parcel. This is a little unique, because the Beetons Office Building is still there, and they're still operating that through spring of next year until their new facility is completed. So that we're leaving intact and leaving there. Here, we're providing temporary access through this drive aisle curb cut here. Otherwise, we're proposing to just keep that area essentially as is, and make sure everything's stabilized, and provide an asphalt, temporary asphalt curb along here. As you get over to the AutoZone here, obviously, we want to be cognizant of the pedestrian connectivity here, especially with the Walmart across the street, although it's likely most people will be driving to these locations. So we're proposing a temporary asphalt sidewalk, coming from the proposed sidewalk along Toby Road, which will be installed, and that will carry from the intersection down to the crosswalk to provide that connectivity for the AutoZone. Moving over to building B here, that area, we essentially are proposing to surround with temporary asphalt curb, knowing that if we try to, to work in that area at all, when a building did come in there, that would be removed and essentially rebuilt. Similarly, though, we are proposing a temporary sidewalk down the side here, down from Toby Road to this crosswalk, to provide ramps here, and all the way down to the Aldi. Obviously, everything along Aldi's front edge will be fully built out, that'll be a nice concrete walk. But along this extent in front of building C, we'd like to put in a temporary asphalt walk until that building's fully built out, and then we'll come in with a nice concrete sidewalk there. Similarly, know that when this construction goes underway, it's gonna be a lot of, thank you.
Smart move.
Appreciate it.
So a lot of duck.
There'll be a lot of tight construction in here, so, you know, this, this parking lot area will likely be utilized for construction, and as such, we would like to defer that...
Can I interrupt you for one second?
...area as well. Yeah, that's pretty much...
While you're talking about that specific area, you've got it in red hash marks, so you've eliminated 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 spaces that would be facing the street, if you will. And then there's a few, but in between, it's not red, so it appears that you're gonna still use that as a drive-through. Is that correct, or is...
So that would still be an access drive there to provide that connectivity, and that's actually paved already.
Okay.
So the pavement is in there, we're just proposing...
It's a binder now?
Those parking areas there.
It's a binder now, it's not a finished?
Yeah, it's binder, exactly.
It's gonna stay binder until you...
Um...
Doesn't matter, I'm just curious.
Yeah, we may, we may just do top coat through there too, since that, that's gonna stay. And I think we'd like to, to strike that, those stop, stop bars there, so that'll kind of be finished product, but it's really the, the parking areas that we'll defer, since, since we thought those would, that area would be utilized during the construction anyway. And of course, similarly over there, you know, we'll carry asphalt curb along the edge of drive aisles, for safety reasons, and to ensure that no one's pulling up on, on these pad areas to use, utilize them for parking, or anything like that. So, you know, as you can see, I guess to summarize, you know, we're proposing to build out everything that we think is reasonable, makes sense at this point, and then we're hoping to defer these pad areas that we've kind of demarcated for, for when those buildings fully get built out. And as you can see, you know, this, this whole parking lot area, all the landscaping, all the, the street trees, et cetera, will still be built out as part of the project leading into the Aldi CO, so...
All right, so I read the letter from the Commissioner, Mr. Requena, and so, so basically what he's asking for, hopefully sometimes if you finish in November, for occupancy for Aldi and AutoZone. I don't have a problem with it. The only thing, personally, the landscaping, now if you don't go ahead and build all 1, 2, 3, 4 more buildings, I get no problem with it, but the landscaping, you're not gonna do it now, right?
No, he is.
You're gonna do it all?
Everything outside of those red areas...
Everything other than...
All these are going.
So the landscaping that's associated with those building layouts is essentially what we're deferring for future construction. Anything that's contingent on the layout, for example, this bank area, you know, depending on what that layout finally is, those trees may, may shift, and the bushes, shrubs may shift. So that's why we're deferring that, and, you know, similarly in the other areas. It's really just landscaping associated with some of those islands that are right up near the building that would be damaged or destroyed during...
So would the, so the sites, like AC, D, and F, what are you gonna, like, level them off and seed them and leave them, like, just...
So yeah, and they're essentially, it's like an earth and, it's graded out, it's rough graded, and it's, it's soil now.
And you're not, you're gonna contain them with Cape Cod berm and stuff?
Yeah, asphalt curb or Cape Cod berm, yeah, exactly.
All right.
And then make sure that they're stabilized, you know?
So David, so your opinion, you're okay with this, I guess, if it's safe? Charlie, what do you think of that?
As far as what they want to do, to get those two buildings open, that's fine. But when we talked, yesterday, we talked about getting security put in place for all the items that are supposed to be done.
That's what I'm saying about the landscaping, I was thinking like a bond.
Landscaping, all the parking, all the signage, anything that would go with a finished product, really should be part of the security or support of the project.
Right.
We've got a pretty ambitious schedule, and some of the things may get done by the time they want it open, but right now, we need to have minimized this unit prices, and I'm not sure if they want to do a performance bond, whether it's a cash security, but that's gotta be in place before the CO can be issued.
Well, our concern is, say you build this and you open, and next year the economy goes sour, let's say. We don't want the site undone...
Yep.
...for how long. So we're gonna need a, I think the town requires 150% bond, right, as 150% of the value?
Typically, what it is, yeah.
So we're gonna need proposals on finishing the parking lot, the landscaping, except of course the buildings, to make the site complete, and it's gonna be 150% of the value.
Okay.
Or cash, or cash, or a bond, either one. I would say that's fair, do you think? Is that fair enough?
Why, that everything is placed before the CO can issue?
And...
In terms of timing, that means that it has to go, if it's a, if it's not a cash bond, it's a performance bond or insurance bond, it has to go to the Board of Selectmen for approval.
And then, we need like, like a time limit for that, so let's say 2 years, if you don't, you guys don't come and do it, we could go out and do it, and cash the bond.
Okay.
That, this is how it works, right? We could put a time limit to it.
Is there any flexibility with the 150%?
Yeah, that's the town rules.
We can always go higher.
Yeah, if you want. The town rule is 150% of the value.
Just have to ask the question, given, you know, obviously, we're proposing to, to finish most of the site improvements, but...
I'm sure you are, but you never know what, what would happen, and what the future holds.
Understood.
Wilma, you want to say something?
Yeah, I have a question on AutoZone. AutoZone is, is only a one-story building?
No, that's correct.
And it's gonna have, what is it gonna have, a flat roof? That's why you have extra bricks around the top?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing is, didn't, didn't you go before planning to add to that building?
Um, no, we're, we're in front of the ZBA, which we're continuing till next week, or next hearing, and that's for enlarging some of the other footprints that haven't been built yet. So the AutoZone and the Aldi are under construction, and those are, those are as shown on the plan.
I've been watching.
Yep. It's moving along.
Kenny, you want to say something?
Okay.
No, just that your decision enables the certificate of occupancy to be issued by Dave Requena, the Building Department. It's, you're, you're, you are not actually voting on the CO itself.
No. It's not, jurisdiction.
Right.
Right. Well, Jake, you want to say something?
No.
Jimmy?
No questions.
So what I recommend, we ask a bond, cash bond, whatever, performance bond, with a date limit, 24 months, is that fair, you think? 24 months limit, so you have 24 months to perform the work. Regarding occupancy, I guess, all the safety matter, before the Commissioner would issue the occupancy, I would recommend that they go make, they gonna, the Commissioner make a visit to the site, make sure it's safe, as well as the town engineer. They go there, walk, if I have time, I'll go, I didn't have time yesterday, I'm sorry. Maybe Ken could go with them, and if they deem it as safe and, and fine and secure, I have no problem with that. I have no problem, I mean, like I said, we don't have jurisdiction to give you occupancy, but we have no problem as the site at all to open the two stores without the others, as long as it's safe and the bond is in place.
Okay.
That sounds fair to everybody?
I just have one question, Mr. Chair. Who's gonna approve the bond amount? Is that something that you want to come back and...
The bond, they gotta go to Selectmen. They're gonna come up with an estimate. We'll have town engineer review it for the, for the landscaping, for the paving, all this, lighting, everything that, complete. Say it comes out to 100 grand or 200, let's say 100,000. So you gotta come up, town engineer gotta review it, make sure it's feasible, that's what it costs.
Okay.
And you go with 150 to the Selectmen, unless you post cash, 150,000, right?
Okay.
That's how it works. And we'll have 2 years maturity.
Okay, so I can work with Ken and Charlie to...
Correct.
With the cost estimate and everything?
Right. Now, while, you don't have to come back for us for occupancy, as long as the bond is in place, or the cash surety is in.
Okay.
As long as you have it, the Commissioner could issue the, once you, they go see with the town engineer all set, and you have the bond in place, they could give you occupancy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
As a board, you probably want to take a vote on that amount?
Uh...
I can make a recommendation, but it should go to you as a board, I think.
It doesn't...
You think you can pull a number out of your head tonight?
No, no way.
Okay.
All right, why don't, you still have time to open, you still, you still have 2 months constructions, at least, or months and a half, so why don't we, if you can come up with the number soon, let the town engineer review it at next meeting, or the one after, we could approve the number, and it goes to Selectmen.
Well, yeah, we plan to be back next meeting anyways.
I, we're gonna give you continuance for the 25th.
Okay.
Does that sound right?
That sounds good.
All right, very well. So I guess we'll wait, and the next request you guys have here, to continue, where is it? I know you have a...
It's on the agenda.
You have a request to continue.
It's, I just put it away right here, but I got a copy of it. Is this what you're looking for?
Yeah. Okay, well...
So you want to move, you want a motion on that right now?
Yeah, so you're asking for continuance for the major modification for Wednesday 25th.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a...
So moved.
Okay, so we continue the major modification for Jay Donnegan, for Cranberry Highway Project, Market, Wareham Marketplace until the 25th. To continue this, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain. Again, again, the next motion, I'd like to hear.
Now, we got them on the agenda in 2 places here, and we're voting on both of them simultaneously.
No, you're, you're, you just voted on the second one.
We just voted on...
The second one.
31-17, that's...
And you have 31-17 here, and you have 31-17 here.
Right.
So he was, he was in front of us to talk about the occupancy, and now we're...
So we just did the continue.
Yep.
The, continue public hearing, we voted continuance. Now, on the certificate of occupancy, we will continue this as next hearing, okay? You'll have numbers for Charlie?
Okay, yeah.
Would that be good?
We'll have numbers on...
All right, so we'll continue this as well, to hear from Mr. Zachary, Zachary?
Yeah, Richards, yeah.
Richards, come in with an estimate, so Charlie can review it, and we'll set the bond, we'll approve it, we'll give a vote, so it goes to the Selectmen.
Okay, great.
Is that good?
So moved for the 25th.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. So that will go until then. So make sure you have this for next time.
Yep. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, let's do this quick, continue public hearing.
Just make a comment to him on the way out.
Right.
For your contractor or client, so the more bushes and trees he plants now, the smaller the bond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just...
Yeah, we're trying to...
Lighting, everything else.
Yeah.
The more you do, the less, exactly.
You're not getting enough money.
Listen, the bond gonna also make sure, gotta, gotta have also, like, the curbs you guys gonna install to rip it up, replace it, the temporary curbing.
Yep.
I understand you, it's gonna, right, it's gonna catch, cost money to take it off, put in the new ones, all that.
Yeah.
All right, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good one. This one here, Jimmy, here, read this one.
29-17, they're requesting a continuance. I don't understand.
All right, petition 29-17, Dorothy Chesnut, 31 Priscilla Ave.
In the best, I, Ken, in the best interest of the applicant, we respectfully request a continuance for this evening's public hearing for 31 Priscilla Avenue, due to a full board of 5 voting members not being available for this application. Please schedule this project for October 25th public hearing. Thank you, Brad, Brad Battello, project engineer, J.C. Engineering.
Okay.
So, before we vote on that, my question is, there are 5 members here, is it, that they're not the same 5 members that they originally started with?
We continue, the super majority, we continue, that's enough.
No, no, my question is that there are 5 members here to vote.
Right, but they're asking for continuance, they're just gonna make it, they didn't know there's 5.
Okay, so they just expected somebody not to show up?
No, no, you know what it is?
They will count on it.
No, no, I couldn't sit on it, so there's 4.
Okay, that's, I...
That's what it was.
That's what I wanted clarified for the record. So even though there's 5 people here, there's only 4 to vote.
Right.
So that said, I make a motion that we continue until October 25th.
All, I have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor to continue, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Next one.
Dear Ken, as per our phone conversation, please remove me from ZBA meeting agenda for Wednesday, October 11th. Please reschedule me for October 25th. Thank you, Dean Gilhooly, 18 Pine Lake Drive. So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor to continue, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain, 5-0-0. It's going too fast for me.
Don't you like these...
Write my notes, one second.
See him.
Okay, yes. And so, oh, done, finished.
That's it, we're home.
That's nice.
Big half hour, you did.
One night I couldn't be here all night.
I promised you. Anything else you want to add, Charlie, David?
Just to, so you're aware, there's a 40B application, a large one, that we have indication is going to be submitted fairly soon.
The one on headed debate, Redbrook Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we should, you should...
I did ask before to have Richard here, if possible, when it comes in.
Yes.
Okay, can you let him know?
Yeah, he's aware.
It's a 40B on Redbrook Road?
Uh, 28.
Is it that piece that used to front on Cranberry Highway, and they took 2 commercial lots off the front, and then made residential in the back?
No.
No, it's a motel.
It's the one with the gray motel next to it.
Motel with the boat, yeah, does it...
Oh, okay, okay, that's, right there at the intersection.
It's called Woodland Cove.
That's gonna be, how many units, does anybody know?
170.
174.
174. Does anybody know how close that puts us to, what is it, we have to have 20%, 10%?
Enough, enough discussion.
It doesn't, it doesn't put you up to 10%.
10%.
No more discussion.
No more discussion?
In public, no. In public, no. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Thank you. Let's see.